Good evening. This is the app. Watching at this meeting everywhere. Welcome to Rainier Avenue Radio's Community Election Connection. I'm Tony B. And this is the second thing of the New Election Connection. We met in a wonderful opening day yesterday. We did a conversation with the Community Police Commission. And three commissioners were here along with Executive Director ECMA. Followed that up with a very browsing Council Nine debate with incumbent Sarah Nelson and Dion Foster. And both of those shows are available on our YouTube page. You can do it the Facebook page. And if you want to go back and take a look, you can. We are excited and tonight we continue our series of candidate debates, conversations, community panels, designed to bring you direct access to the people and issues who yes, will be shaping our city's future. The Community Election Connection is all about empowering you, our community, with the knowledge and information you need to make informed choices. At Rainier Avenue Radio, we believe democracy works best when we all have a seat at the table. And when voters hear directly from the candidates who are asking for their trust. Tonight, we turn our focus to Seattle City Council District Two. District that includes some of the most diverse neighborhoods in the city from Rainier Beach to Beacon Hill. Parts of the Central District and beyond in this resident and business owner in South Seattle. You might feel I'm biased when I say this, but District Two is the heartbeat of Seattle's cultural richness. Small business energy and grassroots activism. It's also a community that continues to face challenges of unaffordability, safety, economic opportunity and equity. That's why this election is so important, not just for District Two, but for the entire city. This evening, we'll hear from the two candidates wanting to represent District Two on the Seattle City Council. Eddie Lynn and Adonis Ducksworth. They'll share their visions, their priorities, and how they plan to address the issues that matter to you. And to help guide tonight's conversation, we're honored to have two distinguished moderators. Former City Council member Tony Wu and the Executive Director of Atlantic Street Center, Dr. Pila Terry. Glad to have both of you. Their insight, experience, and commitment to our community will ensure this debate is fair, balanced, and engaging. Before we get started, here are the debate rules. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement. For those of you who can't see, there is a timekeeper right here. And when you get to 30 seconds or one minute, you'll get a card. When you get to 10 seconds, you'll get another card. When your time is up, you will hear this. This will be followed by me saying, okay, stop. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to questions. Candidates must stay within. There are a lot of time. There are no interruptions while the other candidate is speaking. Moderators, you may follow up with clarifying questions that you would like. And candidates can also request a 30-second rebuttal. So if you request rebuttal, you're going to get 30 seconds and then the other candidate will get 30 seconds and then that's going to be it. So if you rebut and find yourself needing to explain more, that's not going to save you. Okay? Each candidate will have an opportunity for a two-minute closing statement. Now, these rules are designed to give both candidates a fair and equal opportunity to share their positions with you, the voters. So everybody settle in, get ready to hear directly from the candidates. This is your Community Election Connection, right here on Rainier Avenue Radio, your community, your voice, your platform. We had a flip of a coin earlier. Candidate Lynn, one flip. So you get to decide whether you would like to be open with your opening statement or whether you'd like to go second with your opening statement? Or would you like to close with your closing statement? Or would you like to go first with your closing statement?
Choose to open.
You choose to open with your opening statement. Okay, Adonis, that means you get to decide whether you choose to open with your closing statement or go first with your closing statement or go second with your closing statement.
I'm trying to track that. I have a statement. I can start with it, you know.
Eddie's going to start. Yeah, and after this is all done, there'll be time for two closing statements. Would you like to go first with your closing statement?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I'll go last.
You'll go last?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what the whole coin flip thing was about. So we're going to get started. I'm going to just, I have your bios. And if I have to, I will read the bio because they're both super impressive. But I'm just going to ask each of you, just to share a little bit about yourself. Now, I can read about it, have it by, but I really would like, so don't be bashful. And first of all, Dr. Terry, thank you so much for being here as Executive Director of Atlantic Street Center. And I know that there are way more things that I can say about you. We really appreciate your service here in the community, but just tell us, tell them a little bit about yourself.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Dr. Pila Terry, Pila. And yes, I run a nonprofit here that's 115 years old, Atlantic Street Center. We have been serving youth, children, and family for a long time in Seattle, primarily South Seattle and the Central District, but also in South King County as well as in Northern Pierce. I am not a native Seattleite or Wasachtonian. I relocated here in May of 2021 in the middle of the pandemic to run this organization. I'm a Midwesterner, born and raised in the inner city of Chicago, housing projects. I have a lot of lived experience with poverty and marginalization. So that's very passionate, something I'm very passionate about. But I also lived 20 years on the East Coast, New York City. So my background goes back 35 years professionally. And I am really, really in love with Columbia City. This is where I landed. District Two is where I will probably stay. And I hate to admit it, but I might retire here because it's closer than I'd like to admit. So it is an honor to be here. I'm nonprofit. I serve on several boards here. I'm getting very engaged in the community here. I love the Pacific Northwest and the West Coast. It's just a beautiful place to be. And I love the vibrancy of this community.
And again, you want to set this spot just to reprimand. This is your district. You live here.
I live right up the street. And around the corner, but yes.
Carrie and Tanya, say the thing, we can take it for granted that everyone knows who you are. But they still may not know some things about you and there may be folks who don't know who you are. So I mentioned former City Council member, but just an active person in our community, a long time activist, a long time, you know, a person in our community who really is passionate and care. Would you tell us a little bit about your background?
Yes, thank you. I'm so honored to be here, surrounded by amazing folks. My name is Tanya Wu. I'm a fifth-generation Seattleite. I grew up in Beacon Hill and now live in Rainier Beach. My family has a small restaurant in the Chinatown International District called Kao Kao. I also have affordable housing and built affordable housing here in District Two. So a lot of my experiences, my life, my passion, my love is here in South Seattle. I grew up here and I work and I live here currently. And I also run a small mutual aid group. We go out once a week and we've done things where you go to Jackson and Minister Narcan. We do outreach to unhoused folks in the Chinatown International District. And we try to unite our community to try to help those who may have fallen through the cracks. And so I am really passionate about resources and social workers and being out there to help those who may have slipped through the safety net. And so that's something I'm really passionate about and would love to talk about later today. And so I'm so excited to be here. Thank you so much for doing this.
All right. Here we go. Tonight's Community Election Connection is powered by the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. Thank you for supporting informed and engaged communities. Dr. Terry, I'm going to start with you. But before that, we're going to have closing statements, so just that you can get ready. And candidate Lynn, and I'll be calling you both candidates. You elected to go first and you have two minutes for your opening statement. And you are now on call.
Okay, thank you, Tony B. Thank you, Dr. Terry, Council Member, former Council Member Wu and Adonis for being here. So my name's Eddie Lynn, live up on Beacon Hill, been there since 2007. And, you know, I didn't grow up here. So like Dr. Terry, I'm a transplant. I grew up in North Carolina and New England. And my dad immigrated from Taiwan and married my mom, who was white, back in 1970 in North Carolina. But we moved out here when I was finishing up college and fell in love with Seattle. Fell in love particularly with District Two, with Beacon Hill and the rest of South Seattle. And, you know, I wanted to be, I didn't grow up with a strong Chinese, Asian-American community, but I wanted to have that as an adult. I wanted to have that for my children growing up. So love the community here, but we see our community struggling. So many families are struggling. Our elders who have built their lives here are struggling with taxes and utilities and groceries. And so we have so much strength and resiliency in our community. But unfortunately, government has too often not worked for our communities of color. And, you know, our communities have had to take care of themselves. But, you know, we need to do better. Government needs to work for South Seattle. I work on affordable housing and that's really my top priority is to address housing costs. I've worked on projects here in South Seattle like the Four Amigos Building right next door or the Ethiopian Community Village or the Filipino Community Village for our seniors. And I really just want to be a strong voice. I work in the City Attorney's Office. I understand how government works and how it often doesn't work for our community. I want to uplift the work of our neighborhood organizations, things like that, Atlantic Street Center. And, you know, mutual aid groups like Council Member Wu is working on to meet the needs of our community.
Thank you. And candidate Ducksworth.
All right, Adonis Ducksworth. I'm running for City Council, District Two. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. I grew up on Beacon Hill. I went to Mercer Middle School. That's where I met my wife. Did you go to Mercer? There we go. That's where I met my wife, Mercer. My mom was an executive assistant at the VA in downtown at the City of Seattle. My wife's parents, my wife ran the Midwifery School at El Central de la Raza and her dad was a carpenter, local 131. And so we live in Rainier Beach now with, it's me, my wife, and two kids. I have a 15-year-old and 11-year-old. And several months ago, my 15-year-old came up to me and said she wanted to move. What people, you know, I'm learning is people have an understanding, but what people don't understand is is how bad the gun violence is in South Seattle. You know, South Seattle makes up 13% of the population, but it counts for over a third of the gun violence in the city. And that's not right. And when my kid came up to me and said she wanted to move, that just made me, that made me sad. It made me feel helpless because A, I can't just up and sell my house and move somewhere else in the city of Seattle. I can't afford it. And B, I grew up in this neighborhood and I want my kids to grow up in this neighborhood. And so rather than run and hide and then do whatever, I said, let me just step up and see what we can do from a council level, from a position of power to make change. And so I'm running to make things better for children and families. And that means ending the gun violence. That means bringing people inside. That means building housing people can afford. That means stopping people from speeding on Rainier and MLK. And now more than ever, it means protecting our rights against the Trump administration. And it's not just about protecting our rights against the Trump administration. It's about preserving our heritage and our culture as they try to erase it as of today. They're trying to erase it from our national parks. That's the news today. And so we need to stand up. We need to step up. So I'm hoping people stand with me to make this happen. Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Terry, we're going to get started and your first question will be directed to candidate Lynn.
Thank you, Tony. And candidate Lynn, thank you both actually for being here. We have several topics and categories here. And we talk about how richly diverse this community is. So let's start maybe with District Two specifically. It's one of the most diverse districts in the country and vibrant. Tell us how you will ensure that City Hall policies reflect the voices of those who are often left out of the conversation.
Candidate Lynn, you have one minute.
Yeah, too often, City Council, South Seattle is an afterthought. And our voices are not reflected down at City Council. And so I think there's a few things. One is to build those deep connections within the community and to make sure people have access to information. Partially, it's about getting out into the community, making sure you're not expecting people to go town-to-town to meet with you, that you're doing office hours, talking to people where they're at. You know, it's about making sure that we have language access and making sure that our communications are culturally appropriate and sensitive. And, you know, it's, it's, okay, I'm all out of time. Thanks.
Candidate Ducksworth, do you need a question?
Please.
How will you ensure that City Hall policies reflect the voices of those who are often left out of the conversation?
You have one minute.
All right, that's a great question. As somebody who's worked for the DOT going back to 2016 and worked for the city going back to 2010, I can tell you right now, coming down to South Seattle, whenever the city rolls out a project, what I hear from people, especially people that look like us, is I never heard of this. Why weren't we included in this? And where's our voice in this? And so on City Council, I want to change that. I want to change that. And what that means is, is making sure that as we roll out our plans, as we roll out our projects, the community is brought into the conversation rather than excluded in the conversation. That means coming down to City Hall. That means holding the departments accountable to do the proper outreach they're supposed to do. And as council members, we have that power to hold departments accountable. But it also means being in the community. And so I'm committing to open a district office if I'm elected.
All right. Candidate Lynn, is there anything you want to rebut?
No, no problem.
Okay. Ms. Wu, next question, and your question will initially also be directed initially to candidate Lynn.
Great.
And of course, candidate Ducksworth will answer.
What accomplishment or experience do you have that most clearly sets you apart from the other candidate? And why should that matter to the people of South Seattle?
I think the accomplishment, the thing that I've been working on for the past six years is I'm one of two lawyers at the city that works on affordable housing. It's been my full-time job for the past six years. And so again, we've been building affordable housing down here. We've been building permanently affordable homeownership opportunities along Martin Luther King Way. These are sound transit surplus properties that were given to the city that we're transforming into homeownership. Working on transforming the Mount Baker Light Rail Station. There's a big site there that's going to be converted to 400 units of affordable apartments with a early learning center, UW early learning center there. So I have the experience to make progress, to transform city properties into affordable housing, to address our housing needs, to fight for taxing our wealthy corporations to pay for things like rent assistance.
Candidate Ducksworth, do I have a question?
No, I think I got it. And I think that's a really good question. As I'm sitting here thinking about it, it's not one thing that I've done, but I can tell you on various projects throughout the city, the one thing that I've been mindful of and the one thing that I've made sure is to bring people into the conversation. So when we worked on the 23rd Avenue project, big disruptive capital project right through the Central District, right going through massive gentrification, I listened to the people. We listened to the people. We took those concerns to the city and we got those businesses money. We mitigated those businesses. And so what we were able to do is keep those businesses in business during construction, right? I can't take credit for that, but what I did was is I heard people and we brought them into the conversation. I could point to other things like the Seattle Transportation Plan. I helped get that adopted from the mayor's office. The 2024 1.5 billion, $1.55 billion transportation levy, sure, through the mayor's office, we helped make that happen. But that's because we push on the departments to be accountable and do the outreach and get people involved to do what they're supposed to do.
Candidate Lynn, is there anything you want to rebut? Okay, we're going to move on to the next question, Dr. Terry. This question will initially be directed to candidate Ducksworth.
All right. Well, since we're talking about development and inclusivity with that, gentrification comes up still, especially here in South Seattle, and displacement, there are ongoing challenges. What policies would you champion to keep even long-term residences and businesses in the district?
Candidate Ducksworth, one minute.
And that's a, that's a really good question. And, you know, for somebody who's grown up in this district, you know, I've been fortunate enough to be able to stay here. But for a lot of families, they're not able to stay here for a whole number of reasons. And sometimes it comes down to, you know, needing to get the roof on your house repaired and we can't afford it. So what do we do? We're going to sell the house. Now the house is gone. And guess what? That family unit, that thing that stabilized people in this district is gone and they're no longer a part of this community. So we need to make sure we keep our home stabilization program intact in the city. And the other thing that I'm really encouraged by is the reparations that Mayor Harrell has proposed. I think that is a great idea and a great thing to keep pushing forward. And the other thing that's coming through council right now is roots to roof. I think we have a lot of potential to keep a lot of our Black and Brown families in the South End. Thank you.
Candidate Lynn, would you like a question?
No, thank you so much. It is, you know, we're facing enormous gentrification displacement concerns here. And we have to do more to help families stay, to help our seniors stay. We need to, we've increased the eligibility for the senior property tax exemption. We need to make sure that people are aware of that, to do outreach, and again, to do outreach in different languages. Adonis is absolutely correct. And I'm proud to have worked on the Office of Housing, which has loans and grants for homeowners, for seniors, to do home repairs, to do modifications so that people can age in place. Want to support, continue to support the city's equitable development initiative, which supports a lot of our community-based organizations and small businesses. And finally, also support, there's a proposal to ban a lot of the predatory practices, the sell-your-home, you know, that are taking advantage of people that are struggling or seniors who are trying to make ends meet.
Candidate Ducksworth, any rebuttal?
No, thanks.
And we're going to keep moving. Next question. This question initially will be directed to candidate Ducksworth.
So immigrant-owned restaurants, groceries, and nail salons are the backbone of South Seattle's economy. Yet many owners face language barriers, complicated permitting, and fear of ICE enforcement that keeps them from seeking city help. What specific policy would you champion to make sure that city resources, grants, and the permitting process is accessible and safe for these immigrant business owners?
Great question. And, you know, I alluded to this when I kicked this off, but these are scary times for all of us, scary times, no matter who you are, especially with what's happening at the federal level. And really what it's coming down to is the real only protections folks are going to get are from the local level. And so we need to make sure that we've got leaders in City Hall who appreciate, just like what you talked about, Tanya, the small business owners, and put things in place to protect them. And so on council, I will be proposing an ordinance to strengthen our working families. I believe it's called the Working Families. It's at the state level that says that we will not cooperate with ICE, but coming up with an ordinance on City Council to strengthen that so that we are not, we are not dedicating, appropriating any money. Our departments are not working with ICE and our police enforcement is not working with ICE as well. And then also, when it comes to surveillance, I understand that, you know, communities are asking for these things, but we need strong data protection.
Yeah, I agree with Adonis. These are extremely frightening times for so many in our community, whether it's immigrant communities, LGBTQIA, folks seeking reproductive healthcare. And so I agree with Adonis. I don't need, think we need to be expanding surveillance right now. From the city level, you know, we need to make sure that, like our permitting process, our Office of Labor standards, we need to be empowering groups that have trusted connections, that have, that have language access to these communities, that they can educate our small businesses on, you know, how to comply with new labor rules, right? To how to go through the permitting process. So I think doing grants and funding for trusted community partners to do the outreach is critical. Also support the proposal for a new B and O tax exemption for, that is being on the November ballot, which would give an exemption for the first 2 million in revenues. I believe that will be a big help for small businesses.
Candidate Ducksworth, any rebuttal? Tanya? Next question.
So I would love to talk about fentanyl. Fentanyl overdoses are a leading cause of death for people under 50 in King County. And South Seattle neighborhoods like the CID and Rainier Beach are hit hard. What is your plan to reduce overdoses in District Two? For example, do you, what do you think about expanding access to Narcan? And what results do you expect to see within your first year in office regarding this?
Candidate Lynn, that question will see you.
Yeah, we, we absolutely need to be expanding access to treatment. We need to get people off the streets where, you know, they're vulnerable and dangerous. You know, they don't have access to hygiene or to bathrooms. And so I'm really excited about a couple of new developments. There's a new injectable treatment, long-term injection for fentanyl that is being pioneered by Downtown Emergency Services Center that is showing great results and it doesn't have the same withdrawal symptoms. And so expanding that. Also very excited about another DESE program called the Overdose Recovery Center. It just opened and that's a place to take people after they've had an overdose for them to have 24 hours of a place to go because it's just unfathomable that when somebody has this near-death experience that you're just going to send them on their way. So this is a way to get them connected to treatment and services. So excited about that opening up. Just opened up.
Yeah, and this is, this is a hard topic because these are, these folks are people's moms, that are dads, their brothers, their sisters, or people we went to school with. And now we see them, you know, downtown and we see them in the CID, Little Saigon, you know, bent over and sick. And it's really, it's really hard to see because these are people that we love and that we care about. And so first and foremost, we need to treat these folks with respect and dignity. And what that means is quality treatment, quality shelter, quality tiny homes. And I agree with Eddie on some of the things that are coming out of the DESE. I was down in Little Saigon today and I asked one of the brothers who was down there, he was struggling. I said, what's one thing that could help? He said, man, everybody down here wants to kick. That means they're ready to get off the drugs. He said, everybody wants to kick, but we need that medicine. We need that medicine so we don't get sick. We need more of that. And I want to expand more of that so that they can get the medicine they need so they don't get sick.
Candidate Lynn, any rebuttal? Doctor Terry? Pila? Next question.
All right, let's.
This is going to be only you, candidate Lynn.
Okay, so candidate Lynn, let's continue on this track when we're talking about substance abuse. I like to focus really more on the compassionate yet accountability that we're in a divide on, frankly, when it comes to the interventions. And my question is really a two parts. I'd like to start with the first one. Comprehensive support models for those challenged with substance abuse support needs, whether they're wraparound or other services. Can you expand now, after this discussion we just had, on how you would propose looking at different options for that? That's part one, so.
One minute.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And this is personal. This is, I think, you know, both Adonis and I have had family members who have struggled with alcoholism. My older brother was, you know, a chronic alcoholic for decades and wasn't able to work and would have ended up on the street but for my mom housing him. And, you know, I think compassionate, compassion and accountability go hand in hand. And when I think about accountability, I think about, you know, having not a deficit mindset for those who are struggling, right? Having, you know, expectations that they're going to do well and setting them up for success. So accountability is about giving people the tools they need and then giving them hope. You know, this, this deficit mindset of they're not going to get better or, you know, they can't do any better. I think that that's sort of devastating. And so, you know, again, setting up people with quality treatment, getting people into housing. You know, it's really hard to, you know, get over something if you're unhoused. So housing and treatment.
Okay, now, how do we want to do this? You said it's a two-part question. Do we want to go to candidate Ducksworth or do we want to give candidate Lynn an opportunity to get part two of this? I'm going to say let's go to candidate Ducksworth first.
Yes.
And I'm going to kind of pick it up from where Eddie left it off with housing, right? I talked about the medicine people need so they don't get sick and stay in that cycle of being on the street. But it's, it's really hard to get sober. It's really hard to get help unless you have housing. Now, when you are in housing, the type of housing that you have, whether that's supportive housing or some other type of housing through a treatment program, while you're in housing, you need counseling, right? You need the treatment, but you also need the support from other folks with lived experience. Because what I understand in the treatment community Because what I understand in the treatment community, you know, like they like to say one alcoholic helping another, that is one of the best things that people can have. And that's the accountability that a lot of folks, I believe, really want, and they need to be accountable to someone, but that someone has to have that lived experience. It's hard to be accountable to somebody who's never been through what you've been through, if that makes sense. And so, yep, the supportive services, support of the treatment, but also support from those with lived experience.
We'll move on to part two, and we'll direct this question to candidate Lynn, except you're only going to get 30 seconds on part two.
Well, that's not fair. It might be tough. There are lines drawn when it comes to this topic, left, right, progressive, conservative, right? And yet, citizens want safety to be a part of that. As a council member, how do you propose erasing that line? Or at least bringing everybody to the line when it comes to accountability and safety? With people dying, with people worried about dying or being killed? What could you propose that removes the line, the left-right line, the progressive-conservative line? How would you advocate for the issue and not the party?
You have 30 seconds for this one.
Yeah, 30 seconds. So, you know, I do believe that we are a compassionate city, that we, many of us, we have more in common than what divides us. I do think it's a complicated topic, and I think it starts with listening. I think when we can listen to each other, not have these ideological divides, that's how we're going to make progress. You know, I do think we need to lean with, lead with compassion. And we also need to look at the data. What's working, and not just based on ideology, or, you know, fear or political rhetoric?
And that's it. Candidate Duxworth, 30 seconds.
All right, I'll try to do this in 30 seconds. But I think a lot of us focus on our position versus our values. And it's a lot easier to coalesce around a value of love and compassion and dignity than my position. And I'm going to dig my heels into this position. Let's focus on the value. And Eddie alluded to this, but are we listening to respond, or are we listening to understand? And those are very different things, and I think we can achieve that on City Council and here in the city of Seattle.
You're listening to Rayner Avenue Radio dot world. This is our community election connection. Tonight, we are talking with the candidates for Seattle City Council, Position District Two. Our moderators are Dr. Terry and Tanya Wu. And we're going to keep going, and I'm loving this. We get to a lot of great questions here. Tanya, next question, and your question will initially be directed to candidate Duxworth.
So we talked a lot about programs. How will you fund your top priorities for South Seattle? If you support raising revenue through new or increased taxes, what would you choose and why?
That is a really good question. Everything takes money. It takes money, it takes money, it takes money. Now, the good news is, when we look at something like transportation, we were able to pass the 2024 Transportation Levy. So we do have the money there to make sure that we get the safety improvements that people need, especially here in South Seattle. And what you need is, you need a strong person on City Council who understands transportation, who understands the district, who understands the urgency that we need for some of these things down in South Seattle, and we can direct those funds down here for things like housing and other things like that. Yes, I'm a strong supporter of progressive revenue. And so, you know, making sure our jumpstart stays where it's supposed to stay, and that we get the affordable housing built that we need to get built. And then also exploring other progressive revenues, like capital gains tax, to see what else we can do in this, in this part of town. And one of the things that I've been thinking about, I had a great lunch today, was, you know, guaranteed basic income. And so using progressive revenue to put some money back in people's pockets.
Candidate Lynn, one minute. Do you need a question?
No, no, thank you. Yeah, we absolutely need to raise progressive revenues. We are one of the wealthiest places in the country, and yet, that wealth benefits some, but it actually drives up the cost for everybody else, right? And so, we, and the wealthiest in our country just got one of the largest tax cuts in history from the quote-unquote "big, beautiful" bill, but we're going to see cuts to Medicaid and Medicare and food assistance right here in our community. And so we're going to have big needs and big budget cuts that we need to fill, right? Absolutely, we should be passing a local capital gains tax. We should actually be increasing the corporate payroll tax. That's a tax on high earners at the largest companies. And I support the B and O tax proposal, which raises the rates on the largest revenue companies but lowers it for small businesses. And absolutely, we need to be providing tax relief to our fixed-income seniors, to our lowest-income families. Would love to support something like a universal basic income.
Candidate Duxworth, do you have a rebuttal? Okay. Pila, next question. And this question will initially go to candidate.
Well, let's stay with Tanya's question a little bit and do a deeper dive for a minute. In light of some recent coverage, talking about government funding, we had recent coverage at the King County level and concerns about accountability with contracts and grants and funding. And taxpayers are probably wondering, is that universal? So my question at the city level, what measures in the internal systems would you advocate for so that the city doesn't encounter similar problems?
One minute.
Good question. And yes, when you reopen the newspaper, it's very frustrating to see, like, a lot of money going to folks who are genuinely trying to do the right thing, but they're just not getting the results that they're looking for or that the people are looking for. And it's very, very frustrating. I think on top of, you know, a city council person appropriating money, writing laws, and also holding departments accountable, I think there are ways through contracting, there's interesting contracting mechanisms within the city, where those are work authorization contracts to where you have one pot of money that you would give, say, a service provider, but then for every new task or new thing that they come up with, they have to come back and say, "Hey, we met these goals, these goals, these goals." And then they get that next tranche of money. And so I think a work authorization is one model that you could do to hold folks accountable as they move through, but make sure that they have the money that they need over the course of time to accomplish their goals.
Candidate Lynn, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. Yeah, we absolutely, you know, we fund a lot of different programs. I work on housing. We fund affordable housing. You know, we have a lot of grants to, through the Equitable Development Initiative, through our Families Education Preschool and Promise Levy. And so we need to make sure that there's strong auditing and reporting back to the city, not just to make sure that, you know, there's no sort of wrongdoing, but also to make sure that our investments are working, that we're getting good data back. But, you know, there is always going to be bad actors in any space. There's going to be bad actors in sort of the nonprofit space, in the for-profit space, in government, right? And so, but we got to be careful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. You know, the most damaging part is if you have one bad actor, it kind of, everybody else gets painted with this broad brush, even though 98% of the people are doing good work and meaningful work. And so we have to be careful of not overreacting, not creating too many sort of paperwork barriers, which are costly. So we have to have a balance there of auditing and reporting, but not to, you know, overly micromanaging.
Did you have a rebuttal?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just a question. Okay, just a question back, because I think some of the news was around some of our gun violence prevention and some of the diversion programs. Are you calling them bad actors?
I'm not calling, I don't know exactly. I'm just saying there are instances where you hear about an employee who has conducted fraud or something like that. I think that that's what some of the reporting is. And so I'm saying there are certain employees that you, you know, if there's not strong accountability measures. But again, you have that in every organization. You have government employees that maybe commit fraud from time to time. You have fraud in the private sector as well. I'm saying that that happens in every sector, and you have to have a strong sort of accountability in all these different spaces.
All right, we're going to go to break right now. And we'll be back. Before we go to break, I have a question. It's going to put you on the hot seat a little bit, give you something to think about while we're on break, and I will direct this question initially to candidate Duxworth. In South Seattle, with this rich, vibrant, cultural mix of folks that we have, where is your favorite place to eat in South Seattle?
Man, 10 seconds?
10 seconds.
All right, okay. Oh, five? Oh, okay. All right.
Now, we'll count it down. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Where is your favorite place to eat?
Habanero wings and fries, habanero wings and fries, and a Diet Coke at Island Soul. Go get that.
Candidate Lynn, where in this rich, vibrant, cultural community of multi-ethnic foods is your favorite place to eat in South Seattle?
I'm going to say the Dim Sum House right on Beacon in Columbia. It's like four blocks from our house, and so I just love it, being able to walk there and get dim sum.
Well, there it is. You're listening to Rayner Avenue Radio dot world. Your community radio station will be back right after this.
Rayner Avenue Radio.
Love food? Here's some storage tips to keep it fresh longer. Store cut fruits and vegetables in the fridge. Place in reusable containers. Keep bread in the freezer for longer storage. Forty percent of food in the U.S. goes uneaten. Save money, save food, save the planet. Visit Seattle Public Utilities for more tips.
Hey, Seattle. Tune into Lidline Sports every Monday, 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
What up, yo? We are back. This is Epp and the man that don't take no mess, Mr. Oh, B.I.S., Mr. Stevenson. What's they you?
I hope you see the hat that I'm wearing right now. That's how mad I am.
I do. Man, you are angry.
I just want to make that be known. I just want to make that be known.
Tune into Lidline Sports every Monday, 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Lidline Sports.
Atlantic Street Center has been serving the children, youth, and families of the Seattle-King County area since 1910. We partner with families and communities to raise healthy, successful children and youth with services including counseling, early learning, youth development, domestic violence, and education support for school-aged children. Committed to serving the African-American community, Atlantic Street Center provides services and support for all marginalized people. Learn more at atlanticstreetcenter.org.
Happy Hum Day. We're excited that you decided to join us for the party. Fresh Juice is live Wednesday night, 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. Pacific Time on Seattle's Rayner Avenue Radio with the Juice Factory, including me, superstar TK, Inside Patron, and D-Money. We're going to chop it up with some cool people, play some really dope new hip-hop and R&B music, some games, and maybe even a live performance. Lock us in right now on Fresh Juice YouTube page at youtube.com slash at sign Fresh Juice Media, or subscribe to us on Spotify or Apple Music.
Fresh Juice, sad.
Are your kids eligible for or enrolled in Apple Health Medicaid insurance? Bring them to a free dental clinic in Skyway this fall. Public Health Seattle in King County is hosting free dental clinics for kids 12 and under at the Skyway Research Center, one Saturday per month now until December. Visit kingcounty.guivcd for more information. Again, that's kingcounty.guivcd for free dental clinics for kids.
You're listening to Rayner Avenue Radio dot world. Check us out on social media, Facebook and Instagram, Rayner Avenue Radio dot world, and on Twitter, at Rayner Ave Radio.
That tonight is Seattle City Council, District Two. Hey, Eddie Lynn and Adonis Duxworth. Before we continue, we want to take a moment once again to thank the Urban League of Metropolitan States, Seattle, for powering the Community Election Connection through their sponsorship at Rayner Avenue Radio. We want our community to be informed, engaged, and have access to conversations and partnerships like this that make that possible. Now, let's get back into the debate. Our former City Councilmember, Tanya Wu, and Atlantic Street Executive Director, Dr. Pila Terry. Before we get started, I do have one more question. It's only going to take you 10 seconds to answer it. For all those of you who are listening right now, and candidate Duxworth, this will be directed to you. In one word, how would you describe South Seattle? One word, 10 seconds.
Musical.
Okay. Candidate Lynn, one word, how would you describe South Seattle?
Resilient.
Dr. Terry, you have the first question, and please direct that question initially to candidate.
Right. Earlier, we talked a little bit about safety. Let's do a deeper dive, if we can, and let's talk about gun violence specifically. It's tearing our families apart, tearing our communities apart here and across the nation. So the one area that doesn't get much coverage, though, is about illegal gun possession. So as a member of the council, prospective member of the council, what would you propose as a strategy to address illegal gun access and possession in our district and in the city overall?
One minute. Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, like I said, this is one of the topics that got me into the race was gun violence. It is, it's scary, it's shocking, it's hard to hear, it's hard to experience, it's hard to go through, especially when you hear the shots fired. And I know, Tanya, you know exactly what I'm talking about when we hear shots fired down in South Seattle. And so what you're asking here is about how do we get these illegal guns off the street? And a lot of the way these guns end up on the street is people break into homes, they break into cars, and they steal guns. And so we need to do the proper outreach to responsible gun owners to responsibly lock up their guns. That's one thing we need to do. So we need to fund the outreach, we need to make sure we are talking to folks who are legally and responsibly owning guns to responsibly lock up their guns, so people can't steal these and they end up on the street. And we also need to do a better job of tracking the guns that are on the street as they are taken off the street and where they end up.
Candidate Lynn.
Absolutely agree. We need to do things like free lock boxes, gun lock boxes, and do the education, because the way they end up in the streets is, yeah, homes getting broken into, cars getting broken into, so, you know, people need to store them safely in both places. We need to do things like gun buybacks as well. And then, you know, I'd love to work with our youth, to, you know, engage with them, to see what ideas they might have, you know, kind of like a see something, say something, you know, what do they think, you know, how do we get these guns off the street? And we need to fund some of the organizations, youth gun violence organizations, like Community Passageways, Choose 180, and other groups that, you know, Boys and Girls Club, that work closely with youth. You know, they're the, at least when we talk about youth gun violence, they're the ones that are on the, you know, dealing with this every day. I think, you know, we need to include them in the answers.
Candidate Duxworth, any rebuttal?
I don't have a rebuttal, but I have a question. It's not really for Eddie. Can I ask?
You've got 30 seconds if you choose to use it, and then your candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to it.
Okay. I mean, it is just a question, because we see this happen in communities of color all over the country, all over the city of Seattle. Why in the South End? Why are there so many drugs in the South End? Why are there so many guns in the South End? You don't see as many drugs and fentanyl and things like that in other parts of the city. You don't see as many guns on the street. So that's a question that I want to get to and understand, is how, when these guns get confiscated and when these things happen, how come our streets are flooded with guns? How come our streets are flooded with drugs?
Candidate Lynn, if you'd like, you have 30 seconds to respond to that, or 30 seconds. Tanya, next question, question is directed to candidate Duxworth.
So we heard a couple of suggestions on what you would like to see when it is related to keeping guns off the streets, but I want to hear also some specific steps you will take to reduce violent crime among our youth in Rayner Beach and Beacon Hill, while at the same time, how do we build trust with our Black, Asian immigrant communities who have historically been overpoliced?
Candidate Duxworth, one minute.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a point in everyone's life where they, unfortunately, are tasked with making a choice, but, and that choice of whether to commit crime or not commit crime. Number one, we really need to focus. Number one, we really need to focus our dollars and our resources on prenatal to five years old. That's where we're gonna get the most bang for our buck. When we invest in, in people who are about to have children and as they raise those children, we get the most return on that. For every dollar that we spend from prenatal to five, we get a seven, you know, sevenfold return in our investment. But the other thing for the kids and the young people out there right now today, thinking about picking up guns, thinking about turning to crime, we really need to focus on getting them the education they need, the employment they need, and also teaching them the responsibility of being a grown-up and what that looks like. Those are some of the things that worked for me that kept me out of trouble. And so those are some of the things I want to put in place for our youth today.
Candidate Lynn, same question.
Yeah, we, we need to invest in our youth. We absolutely need to invest in preschool. So we do have an upcoming levy called the Families Education Preschool and Promise Levy, which does invest deeply in wraparound services for our youth. You know, youth need mental health. Our, our youth are struggling with mental health. You know, it's, it's an epidemic right now with social media and, you know, what's going on in the political landscape. You know, we need safe places for them to go. Things like, you know, the community center nighttime basketball. So a supervised, safe space for them to, to be around community. We absolutely need to invest in our apprenticeships. And we also need to invest long-term in, you know, building relationships. So again, sort of the youth violence interruption programs. We need deep, committed, ongoing investments, not one-time funding. It takes a long time to build these relationships, these mentoring with youth. And with sporadic funding, that's difficult to do.
Candidate Duxell, any squants? Dr. Terry, Pila, next question. Please direct this question initially to candidate Lynn.
All right. Candidate Lynn, let's talk about violence in transportation or at least public transit. And, you know, the transit access, we've already said, is critical for the South Seattle area. What would your plan be to improve safety and reliability on buses, light rails, especially for working-class riders and youth?
One minute.
Yeah, it's so important that our buses, our light rail be safe, reliable, and pleasant. You know, long-term, we need to have other ways for people to get around. And unfortunately, we have these large societal failures, whether it's homelessness, or mental health, or drug addiction. And we see it showing up in our different public spaces, whether it's in, in transit, or in our small businesses, or in our neighborhoods. And so we really need to address these larger public failures of, you know, getting people into shelter, getting people into treatment. We also need to expand, and we have grown our investments in public safety. You know, unfortunately, we lost, a bus driver was, is killed. And that's, you know, unfortunately, what it took for people to finally start paying attention to public safety. But yeah, we need security guards on our buses and just more eyes. You know, it kind of just gives everybody a greater sense of security and safety when we, we have other people that can be community ambassadors on these, in these spaces.
Candidate Duxell, did you like the question repeated? Are you good?
No, I think I got it. This is another great, these are all really great questions. You know, I learned to ride the bus when I was 12, and it opened up a whole world of freedom for me. And it gave me a sense of autonomy that that's lasted me a lifetime, and I'm still an active transit user. And so, you know, transportation is what connects us to the things we love to do. It connects, I mean, I don't know how many people love to go to work, but it connects us to our jobs, it connects us to our loved ones, it connects us to the recreation. So it's, it's absolutely imperative that people feel safe when they use transit. And so lucky for us on council, we will have the opportunity in 2026 to shape the next Seattle Transit Measure, which is a sales tax that pays for transit service, but it also pays for transit improvements. And so with some of those improvements, we can make improvements around the stops with extra lighting, with better sidewalks, better curb ramps. We can also supplement security on the buses with some of those dollars as well. And then also totally, we need to be activating the spaces around transit stops to give people, you know, add more eyes to the street.
Candidate Lynn, any rebuttal? All right, we'll move on. Tanya, you want to ask this next question and direct it to candidate Duxell?
So this is alluded earlier. How would you evaluate the city's progress on racial equity? Particularly as it relates to safety, economic opportunity, housing access, and especially investment here in South Seattle? Like what concrete policies or accountability measures would you champion to close racial disparities to ensure that our community has equitable outcomes?
Well, I think one measure is our, our communities, are more people of color moving into our communities or more people of color moving out of the communities? And from what I can see, more people are moving out rather than moving in. So I think that is a great metric to see if the city is doing what we need to be doing to support people that look like us. One of the things the city does have, which is the Race and Social Justice Initiative, which I worked on through the DOT, and we look at everything through a race and social justice lens. And so we have Race and Social Justice Plans that we like to put together, that we implement when we go out with some of these large capital projects. I want to take that Race and Social Justice Initiative and expand it to all departments. I think departments have it in, in some kind of way or another. But if we start looking at things through a race and social justice lens, and we start looking, are we growing our population or are we losing our population? And those are good metrics right there to see if what we're doing as a city are working or not.
Candidate Lynn.
Um, yeah, such a great question. A few things. One is city contracting. So we have a lot of construction projects, you know, many millions in the billions in terms of these large public infrastructure projects. We want to, we want to make sure that our minority businesses, our women businesses have the same access. Oftentimes, there are barriers to those things like bonding or just, you know, access to information to make sure our, our small businesses and minority businesses have access to that. Another big one is homeownership. You know, thankfully, at the state level, we passed something called the Home Ownership Covenant Act, which is meant to address the wrongs of the past around redlining and racially restrictive covenants. And it's a great program that provides 150,000 in down payment assistance for folks that were harmed by these practices. Would love to expand upon that locally and get the word out to make sure people are taking advantage of that.
Candidate Duxell, any response? Pila, next question. Please direct this question initially to candidate Lynn.
All right. So we're talking a little bit about equity, but I want to narrow it down to youth and their role in policymaking. Seattle, this area, South Seattle, has some of the youngest members of the population. And what kind of systems do you right now know are not in place to include their voices in shaping city policy? And how would you advocate for doing such?
Candidate, one minute.
Yeah, I mean, there are some systems, like there's a Youth Advisory Council. But, you know, oftentimes, unfortunately, these are, are spaces that are not completely performative, but it doesn't feel like they have a real say in, in outcomes. Thankfully, the Seattle School Board also now has students on the school board. So that's a great step forward. But yeah, I would love to expand voting rights for students or for, for kids 16 and up to expand their voice, to make the Democracy Voucher Program maybe available to, to youth 16 and up. But yeah, definitely want to deeply engage with different groups like the NAACP Youth Council, Seattle Student Union, because this is their future. This is their city. We need to make sure they have a seat at the table.
Candidate Duxell, one minute.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate this question. I know for myself as a youth, I, I, I didn't really know or understand what was going on with city politics, right? And nobody came to me to say, hey, here's how the city works. You get a lesson in high school about civics, but not so much how your city works. And, and one of the things that I've seen really that has, you know, there's a young brother who has helped out with the campaign, and I've seen him working is, is the city's internship program. And expanding that internship program throughout our public schools to bring more kids to the city to actually work for the city and see how policy is made. And this young brother Kenny, man, I mean, just watching him grow in the city and come out here and work on campaigns, and learning from the inside what policy looks like. So expanding that internship program, but not just expanding the program, but also tracking whether they get jobs after they get out of the internship program. And so doing a longitudinal study to make sure that what we're doing with our internships is actually working and they're able to get jobs and make connections.
Candidate Lynn, any response, brother? All right. You are listening to our Community Election Connection Day Two, right here on Rainier Avenue Radio. And this is powered by the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. So we want to thank them for their support and the support of informed and engaged communities. Tanya, next question. Please direct this question, and we're coming down the home stretch here to candidate Duxell.
Great. I have a tree question and equity. So life expectancy in South Seattle is much shorter than other parts of the city. We have the least amount of tree coverage in our neighborhoods. What is one environmental justice project you will prioritize to get to our goal of 30% tree coverage? Yes, what is one environmental justice project that you will prioritize in getting to our goal of 30% tree canopy?
Here's the thing, I think, me personally, I think people, when they come from other parts of the country, come from all over the world, they come to Seattle, they see how green the city is, it's the Emerald City. And so we need to do everything that we can preserve that. And so specifically, what I want to do is, I think we do need to revisit the tree ordinance and make it easier for developers to keep trees, period. I also think the city needs to continue to take the lead on preserving trees. And so that means making sure that the three to one, the executive order is funded. And the, 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 the sale department of transportation in our levy, we've dedicated a lot of money to make sure that we can do that. So I think those are a couple of things that we can do to make sure that we are not only maintaining, but actually building up our tree canopy, especially down here in South Seattle.
Candidate Lynn, would you have a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Yeah, we, we absolutely need to provide incentives for, for when developers, when there is an existing tree, things like density bonuses, setback exemptions, in order to make it feasible to preserve that tree, but also to have housing. We need both. We absolutely need to increase our tree canopy in our public spaces. You know, I live on Beacon Avenue, and there's a four-mile median that goes from Alaskan down to South Beacon. And it would, you know, there's a few trees, but we could plant so many more. I did speak to somebody at the Parks Department who does tree preservation, and he was saying, you know, unfortunately, they've been planting a lot, and you have to take, you have to care for that tree for five years to make sure it doesn't die off, but their resources have not grown. So even though they have more trees to take care of, they have not, you know, we have not grown the, the people power to do that. So we need to, to plant and to invest in preserving them in our public spaces.
Thank you. And Tanya, thank you for asking that question. If you are a Rainier Avenue Radio listener, you know that we do a week-long summit on environmental justice. Part of the reason that we do that is because members of our community sometimes find it difficult to feel connected to those issues. And I remember saying during that week-long summit that we never hear the candidates talk about the impact of environmental justice. You said, we live shorter periods of time. That's critical. If you, if you live in South Seattle, if you're Black, you breathe, this is from the American Lung Association, worse air than a white person. If you're brown, you're breathing three times worse air than a white person. We live 10 minutes from the Duomo River. You cannot fish in the Duomo River. They don't even want you to step foot in the mud in the Duomo River. And so I'm just gonna give you each 30 seconds to say something about your feelings about environmental justice and connecting with our community on issues. This is a matter of survival, but people are busy. People work, they have jobs, and this is something that's killing you slowly. But it's definitely killing you. So candidate Duxell, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds to start with to address that question to our audience listening right now. So whatever it is and however you want to say it, my point is for the audience, this is serious stuff, and you need to find out how these candidates feel on ultimately something that is shortening your life and providing circumstances that are not, we talked about having less trees and how that factors into the difference in environmental justice. So you've got 30 seconds to make a case for the fact that you will consider this community when it comes to environmental justice.
I mean, I can think of one thing quite simply, you know, we need affordable housing. And I mean, housing is essentially, we need housing just to survive. But are we putting all of our affordable housing on busy, polluted arterials? That's one question to ask. Or are we making opportunities so that Black and Brown kids can live in the neighborhood, two, three, four, five blocks, in a neighborhood close to a lake? Right? Not on these busy, polluted arterials. And we also need to do what we can as a transportation department to give people other opportunities besides driving.
You're up. You heard what I said. I mean, I hope you felt the passion in which I said it because I think it deserves an honest answer for members of our community. You have 30 seconds to make your case to our community that these issues are important to you.
Yeah.
Even if they're not openly important to members of our community.
No, I, I absolutely. And the life expectancy speaks volumes, and we do have these busy arterials on MLK and Rainier and I-5, and we get the air pollution and noise pollution. And another big thing, we have a King County International Airport right next to Beacon Hill, and there's still leaded fuel in the planes. We know that lead has serious impacts on childhood development, and, but people don't know that there's still leaded fuel. And so I really want to work with the King County International Airport Community Coalition to address that, to get awareness out, and to ban leaded fuel in those planes.
These are things that impact your life. Thank you, Tanya, had to jump in right there. Pila, back to you. Next question, please, and let's address this question to candidate.
All right. I'm gonna go with a vision question. And what I want to do is just ask if you are elected, what's your long-term vision for District Two, and how will you measure success?
Candidate Lynn, you have one minute.
My long-term vision is a place where our diverse communities can thrive, can, you know, whether it's through affordable homeownership or, you know, having strong renter protections and affordable apartments. Where we have affordable childcare and great public schools, where our kids can, you know, go to school, take public transit and be safe, and go play in their neighborhoods and not worry about gun violence, where they have strong connections to our employers, whether it's the maritime industries, or the tech jobs, or the healthcare, or government jobs. You know, where we celebrate our diversity, whether it's our immigrant communities, our communities of color, whether it's our LGBTQIA communities, where we celebrate our, our progressive values and lead with compassion and get to know each other and.
Candidate Duxell, same question.
Great question. You know, sometimes I feel like you gotta look back to look forward. I feel like South Seattle was a place at one point, like I said, where, you know, my wife's dad was a carpenter, my mom was an executive assistant. We lived in a triplex on Beacon Hill. I had friends who, you know, all, all races, from Japanese to Chinese to Mexican, we all skateboarded through the streets, and we had a really good time. And so we had a safe neighborhood. We had an affordable neighborhood. And so when I'm looking back, that's how I'm looking to the future, right? To where working-class people can live in the South End again, where kids can play in the street, where people can play with people from all different races, from all different cultures, right? The South End is about 70% people of color, but that number is getting small. And if you remember what I said, are we growing our populations or are we losing our population? And so when I think about my vision of, of South Seattle going forward, that's how I see, that's what I would like to see in South Seattle.
Candidate Lynn, any rebuttal? Tanya, next question. Please direct this question initially to candidate.
I love your visions. And you know what I'm gonna ask? I'm gonna ask, what's your plan? So name one legislative action or policy you would advocate or try to pass within your first year to get closer to the vision and the plan that you have just laid out before us.
Candidate Duxell, one minute.
Sure. I, I think there'll be the work of the council, and one of the things that we are gonna have to do is we're gonna have Phase Two of the COF Plan. And so that's where we will have the opportunity to zone, and we will zone for abundant housing, all housing types, affordable housing, social housing, middle housing, a market rate housing. And so we will have that opportunity, and that's one step towards that. And the other thing, which is a little bit bolder, but I think there's some support on the current council, is for universal basic income. And so while we're talking about taxing our most wealthy and making them pay their fair share, we also need to be putting money back in the pockets of the families that need it most. And so I believe that is through universal basic income, and I think we can, we can actually start. And so I believe that is through universal basic income, and I think we can, we can actually start that process when we get on council, when I get on council, one of us gets on council. Vote for me.
Candidate, candidate Lynn.
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, there's actually a lot that Adonis and I agree on, and um, progressive avenues, so passing a local capital gains tax. Cause um, you know, not only are we facing budget cuts, um, we're also facing these federal attacks. And so we need um, to, you know, increase rental assistance. It's a lot um, more affordable and uh, i- if we can prevent homelessness in the first place rather than um, you know, it, it's harder once people are already in the street. Um, we need to uh, grow our shelters, but we need revenues to do this. So um, again, passing a capital gains tax, increasing our jumpstart payroll tax, um, and you know, if the voters hopefully approve um, this B and O tax uh, on the largest corporations um, to, to meet our, our basic needs.
All right, uh, any rebuttal? That's it. That's it, we're gonna vote, how about the round of applause for our moderators? So we're gonna give you an opportunity for closing statements. Of course, I have a question. You can answer this question in ten seconds, five seconds, all right? Mariners, Seahawks, Sounders, Storm, Kraken, which Seattle team do you rep the hardest? Candidate Lynn, come on now.
Sonics. Break it back, break it back.
Candidate Duxwell, you heard the question?
Yeah, and now, somebody who was a ball boy for the Sonics in high school, I would say the Sonics. And I don't want to discriminate against people who put the scarves on and the baseballs, but Seahawks, let's go Seahawks.
Okay. Thank you, uh, both, and you um, both have an opportunity for closing statements. Your closing statements are two minutes, and this is your opportunity to share uh, with our audience, your vision, your um, likes, your dislikes, why these folks who are your constituents should vote for you. And this will last forever. No, I'm sorry, we didn't do audience questions tonight. Oh. I'll take two questions, we're a little over time, all right? Take two questions, don't attack either of the candidates, and have a question, not a statement, all right? Well, there's two, but you, you got it, all right? I'm gonna do it, but thank you for being here, I can't see out there now, this, yeah, come on up. Give us your name and your question.
Uh, my name is David, and I just want to just uh, thank everybody that's on the panel. It's a very distinguished, and it shows us what we bring to District Two of all this distinguished people here representing our neighborhood. Um, I wanted to ask you a question regardless of gun violence. In nineteen ninety-four, my childhood friend was killed at a school dance in Rainier Beach. That was my first experience with gun violence, and it stayed with me ever since. So I want to ask, what will you do to prevent gun violence without uh, adding more police? And how will you make sure people like me who lived through this actually have a voice in shaking public safety? How would you fi- how would you diversify who gets funded? Whether it's contracting consultants, supporting grassroots organizations, bringing people with lived experience and real passion for change? Because we need more than programs, we need partners who understand the work from the inside out.
That's why the community gets voice. And Lynn, I just happened to be looking at you, but I'm gonna give you the first back, thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing, Dave. Yeah, I mean, gun violence, um, and unfortunately, when we have a instance of gun violence, um, you see this ripple effect, right? Um, it has this mental health, this emotional health, and, and everybody who's impacted um, in, in many ways becomes more likely um, uh, to, to, you know, to act um, to act, to, basically gun violence sort of replicates itself within the community. And so we absolutely need to, to lean into and to work closely with people with delivered experience, um, to uh, work with our youth and, and, you know, engage with them about how are they processing these traumatic experiences, um, to make sure that they have space, safe places to, to go to, to, to talk to mentors, to access mental health providers, um, and, you know.
Yeah, Tom, candidate Duxwell.
I appreciate that question, and as somebody who grew up in the South End, my wife's here, she grew up in the South End. Um, we, we know people who have died from gun violence, um, going back to middle school, when kids were killed in middle school, and I, and I think that still happens. And that's, that's traumatic and it's sad and, and it's awful. And I talked about education, I talked about employment, I talked about responsibility. I also talked about a little bit earlier about taking the work authorization model as a different type of contracting model to hold some of our gun violence prevention specialists accountable. But the one thing that you highlighted, and that I don't think that has been brought up, is supporting the folks and supporting the children and supporting the young people who witness the gun violence. And helping them get through that, because that's trauma, that's trauma, whether they want to admit it or not. And so for all the kids at Garfield that had to witness that, that's trauma. So when kids have to shelter in place at South Shore just yesterday, that's trauma. And we need to make sure that we have the funding, and we need to make sure we have the right people in place to support them.
That's Tom, thank you. We have another question, just uh, give us your name, and then give us your question, and this time, candidate Duxwell will take it first. And thank you, and thank you for cooperating too, cause I know a lot of y'all wanted to talk, and two people just stepped up and y'all said, okay, you two go. Give yourselves a round of applause. That's how we get down in South Seattle, we, we take care of each other, go ahead. So you asked a question on behalf of your community that comes from you, give us your name first.
My name is Ashley Towns, and um, I live in Rainier Beach, and I'm a fish ecologist, I'm a black fish ecologist, and I've been doing a lot of work in the South End. I've been doing a lot of work in the South End, um, specifically around environmental justice and community engagement with the mission of revitalizing blue and green spaces, and also protecting um, the threatened Chinook salmon in our neighborhood, because there's a, it's a major pit stop in Rainier Beach. Um, however, it's been difficult at times to do this work, um, due to the consistent violence, uh, day and night. And I tend to hear science, uh, sirens and emergency calls multiple times um, throughout the day and throughout the night. And um, gun violence, we've talked about throughout the night here, continues to impact families and young people in deep ways. Uh, one tension I hear a lot from residents and my neighbors and even the kids at Rainier Beach High School, um, is whether resources should go towards the police-first approach or towards public health workers and community-based solutions. Both sides have been mixed sentiments in our neighborhood, and if elected, how would you navigate this divide? And what concrete steps would you take to balance immediate safety needs with longer-term investments in healing and prevention? Thank you so much.
Community, get out. Candidate Duxwell, talk to our community about what our community wants to know?
Yes, well, first, thank you for just even mentioning that and being from Rainier Beach, cause like I said, uh, you know, I go to other parts of, of the district and gun violence is not a priority for folks, and so it's really great to have somebody from Rainier Beach, um, you know, help acknowledge that this is a real, a real issue that folks deal with. And like I said, when you are in your home and shots are fired and you don't know where they're coming from and they're loud, it's scary, it's, it's really, 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 really scary. And so I absolutely agree, we need to treat gun violence like the public health crisis that it is. And so with that, you know, we need to make sure that we are data-driven in our response. Um, you know, the city did, the city's auditor gave us four or five recommendations on what we need to do, and one thing that we need to do is make sure that we're gathering the right data. Cause that's what they do in public health, and they treat it like an epidemic, right? So where is the problem coming from, how can we treat the problem, who's involved in the problem? Now, that will take some type of law enforcement to do that, investigators, and so we need to make sure we have the right folks in place to do that.
Candidate Lynn, same question, obviously this is something that our community thinks is important, we can see a theme here, and um, as an elected official, they want to know.
Yeah.
So you have one minute?
Yeah, absolutely, um, and we see it in, in, you know, down in Rainier Beach, we see it in New Holly, we see it in uh, Rainier Vista, which is just down the hill from where I live on Beacon. And um, yeah, it's, it's extremely frightening, and everybody, public safety is a human right, and I believe it's, it's a both and approach. Um, you know, I think when we, we get back to the, the defund time, and I think a lot of the community knows that true public safety requires investment, it requires mental health, it be, you know, uh, requires uh, resources for our youth. At the same time, um, we also need uh, police officers, we need a more diverse police force, we need uh, police officers who understand our community, that come from our community. We need to, more women police officers to, to meet the thirty by thirty, and we need real police accountability as well. Um, because when there's misconduct, it breeds mistrust within our community, and we've had plenty of uh, you know, bad instances and, and harm to our community from uh, you know, unconstitutional policing, so we need both.
Okay, and this is on me, we're gonna be about fifteen minutes over time, but the community has to speak, so I, it's, it's, it's gonna happen, so. I even know there's more poking out there, but yes, just tell us who you are, and then your question.
Thank you for giving me a statement, uh, I'm just gonna make it short and formal, right? And uh, I've lived in South Seattle for the first fifteen years. And my name is Lata Ahmed, I'm the driver's senior representative for all the Washington, and uh, as well as my double level Seattle based community. And so I just wanna make it, uh, too many uh, of our youth are being lost to crime and drugs. And organizations like our provide mentorships, sports, and empower with all people of color, right? Especially to youth, so, but the resources are limited. As, as a council member, how would you issue our consistent support and funding for the youth program while also giving immigrants and refugees live group in District Two are really set at the table in this country?
I'm, I'm gonna let you decide, anyone ask this question first?
Whoever come first, I really, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you um, so much, and um, you know, I, I grew up um, in Durham, North Carolina as, as a son of an immigrant. And it was really hard for me, cause I didn't feel like either of my parents understood what it was like for me and my brother to grow up there. Cause you know, my dad came here as an immigrant, he, he didn't know what it was like to grow up dealing with sort of the, the racial dynamics um, of the US. And same thing with my mom, you know, she was white, so she, she didn't understand what it was like. And so um, you know, one thing, one program that we have, um, well, one, we need to make sure that our, our educators, that we have a diverse um, educator force um, in Seattle Public Schools. Um, and that there's language access, that we invest in our dual-language immersion programs, uh, so that, you know, we, we're, have an asset-based mindset. Um, so the idea that, you know, kids that speak multiple languages, you know, we should be doubled down, you know, investing in that, and, and these are the kids of the future that can use this, the, their language abilities for um, job opportunities, business opportunities.
Yeah, and I'll just say this, uh, one of the more frustrating things is somebody who, you know, just experienced this of city council, and city council advocating for the South End. Um, it's hard to have council members who have really actually advocated for the South End, right? We wanted that skate park in Rainier Beach for, for years, and it took just the advocacy of me just talking about it here, that they're finally gonna break ground on it two, three years later, right? So you need strong leaders who represent the district, who want, who put the district first, have a sense of urgency. But also what that means is making sure that those dollars are appropriated correctly, so that we get our soccer fields redone, we get our base, we get our baseball fields redone, we get our football fields redone, right? So that means having somebody on city council who's gonna actually say, no, we need to have this done today, and tapping into the resources, the parks levy and other things like that, that will do that, and directing those funds now, and not in five, six, seven years.
Okay, we're gonna go straight to this, uh, because we're going over time, thank you for allowing our community to ask questions, there are more. Candidate Lynn, you have two minutes for your closing statement, again, you heard what I said before about this lasts forever and all that good stuff. Two minutes, you're on clock.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much uh, for this opportunity um, and to engage with the community for um, all you do at Rainier Avenue Radio. Thank you uh, to our moderators here and to Adonis for, for being here tonight. Um, you know, we, we face a lot of challenges right now, whether it's um, housing costs, homelessness, the fentanyl drug prices, gun violence. Uh, we also are facing unfortunately, you know, enormous attacks from the federal government and threats to come take over our police force. And so uh, you know, right now is the time for us to come together as a community. We have the best community down here in South Seattle, District Two, um, we are a resilient community. We um, have leaders who um, have been taking care of our community for, for decades, and we really need to empower that, that great work. Um, and so we need to make sure that city council is, is funding the hard work uh, of our community. And so to that last question, um, how do we make sure that those uh, resources come to our youth? Uh, on the ballot in November, there's something called the Families Education Preschool and Promise Levy. And again, it funds preschool programs like Denise Louis and El Centro. It funds um, a lot of the wraparound services and after-school programs like Boys and Girls Club. Um, and then it funds the community colleges for our youth, as well as for the first time, it's gonna fund apprenticeships. Um, and so city council has an oversight role, and I'd love to, to make sure that that money stays invested in District Two. One other thing, forgot to mention, married to a public school teacher, I've been a strong advocate for public education in the PTSA space. And we can do so much more to collaborate between city council and uh, the school board, between the city and Seattle Public Schools. And uh, thank you all, uh, would love to earn your support, and again, thank you to Rainier Avenue Radio.
And candidate Duxwell, you have two minutes, you are now on the clock.
Thanks. Uh, first, I just want to say I'm incredibly grateful and blessed to be in this position, uh, somebody, you know, like I said, who grew up on Beacon Hill, it was just me and my mom. Never in my wildest dreams that I think I'd be running for city council in a big, major city like this. So I'm really grateful and blessed to be in this, and, and thanks Eddie for being here, and thank y'all, and thank everybody else and the support that we get um, to just be up here doing this. Uh, it's not easy work, uh, it's interesting work, but um, it, it is cool to get the message out. Uh, and so, you know, and one thing I hear from people is, you know, oh my gosh, this is so great, we have two great candidates, right? And that's not why, what I want to hear, but you know, that, that works, we, I, yes, we have two great candidates, and, and no matter who's elected, I think, you know, the district will be in, in a really good shape. But people are gonna have a choice, and that choice is, do you want somebody who's actually from the neighborhood, who has that experience of actually working with people on the ground to make projects happen? Projects that you can go look at in the city and say, oh wow, they got that done, right? So people will have a choice, and I, I, I hope people go and they look at the website, and they look at the social media, and, and really put the two candidates side by side, and, and on policy, we're not that different. But what are you looking for in a candidate, and who's ready to hit the ground running on day one? So I appreciate it and thank you.
All right, um, let's hear it for our candidates. Um, yeah, and, and I also want to thank uh, and our, our staff here at Rainier Avenue Radio, we worked hard to put this together for y'all. And so thank you for coming out and showing out live, and of course, those of you listening and li- and watching on our streams and socials, we appreciate you, as well as I gotta thank the staff here. I want to thank our timekeeper as well, uh, takes a lot to put these types of things uh, together. Of course, I want to thank the moderators, let's put round of applause. Uh, good questions, and again, Eddie and Adonis, thank you for sharing your time uh, and your vision within the community tonight, and um, you had to see. And it just, it's not an advantage, Adonis said, vote for me.
I mean, I need them.
Yeah, we got, we have another debate coming up on Thursday, that'll be the Mayoral Debate, that'll be incoming. Mayor Bruce Carroll and uh, candidate Katie Wilson uh, will be here, that'll be Thursday. Uh, last night we did Council Nine Debate, a little contentious, if you missed it, uh, you can go back and you can watch it on our socials uh, as well. Again, a, a wonderful debate tonight, we appreciate you and the respect that you're showing, that's another aspect to politics, so it's, it is what it is, you know? Um, there's nothing wrong with being contentious either, it is what it is, it's just another example of how we get out here um, uh, in, in South Seattle. Tonight's debate is of course part of Rainier Avenue Radio's community election. Tonight's debate is, of course, part of Rainier Avenue Radio's Community Election Connection. Yesterday started 31 days, 31 days every day. Even though this is an off-election season, it's not a presidential year, it's not a midterm. These elections that happen in your local community are important. These are the folks who will shape the future of your city. These are the folks who will make decisions about affordable housing, who will make decisions about surveillance. We had a question yesterday, I'm not going to answer it, but seven out of two, a few days ago, council members passed more surveillance in the city. Now, maybe some of you liked that. Maybe it was just an overwhelming response from people who didn't like it. And according to, you know, the executive director of the CPC, the Community Police Commission, that was like a record for people who said, I don't want this, but the city council voted. Was that voting against the will of the people? I don't know. It had the reasons, but you should know stuff like that from your council members. Our commitment is to keep you informed and connected during this election season. Democracy only works if all of us participate. And these conversations are designed to give you direct access to the people who want to represent you and the decisions that will shape our future. This District Two race matters not only because it represents some of Seattle's most diverse and historic neighborhoods, but because the issues here reflect the challenges and opportunities across the entire country, across this city. Your voice, your vote, your involvement will make the difference. And again, before we close tonight's debate, I want to once again thank the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle for powering our community election connection. Their commitment to equity access and civic engagement is what makes nights like this possible. Together, we're working with the Urban League to make sure our community has the tools and information it needs to make informed choices at the ballot box. On behalf of all of us here at Rainier Avenue Radio, thank you all for tuning in. Thank you all for who showed up today. Again, we've got a lot more coming. This is your Community Election Connection. I'm Tony B. Thank you and good night.